All right, good evening. It is approximately five past six on August 16, 2022. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could stand and face the flag of our nation if you are willing to enable.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take your seats. I'd note for the record that participating in tonight's meeting are myself, William Ramsey, Chair, Liz Klein, Board Member, and Joe Fisher, Board Member. I also want to note that this meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Anyone who wished to record this meeting tonight? Seeing none. I'm also going to note that we're trying something a little different tonight. We are allowed, under the law, to do what we call a hybrid meeting, which allows certain members of the Board to be present and also allows the public to participate on Zoom. So I know we have some individuals on Zoom tonight, and we have some folks here in the room, so we're going to see how this works going forward, and maybe we'll use it again if it proves to be productive. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Are you ready to proceed, Liz?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'll take a motion.
A move to approve the minutes dated August 2, 2022.
Second.
I'll allow some favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Aye and aye as well, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is warrant Article B, discussion of public safety facility. I believe we have Sean from KBA here. I see Mr. Garrity in the audience as well. Good evening. Sean, if you could just go up to the podium right there, if you could just state your name and your background just briefly for the record, it'd be appreciated.
Sure. My name is Sean Schmiegel, Associate Principal at KBA Architects, or Castlebo, sorry, Castlebo's Associates, architectural firm for the public safety facility. Also with me, we have Paul Callis and Sue McCann from Hill International, who is the OPM of the project. So this evening, I wanted to provide kind of a brief summary of where we are today, where we've been, where we are, and where we're heading. So if, Michelle, thank you. So as I noted, kind of do a brief history, we started about two years ago, year and a half, or two years ago, a feasibility study, worked with both police and fire departments, looked at existing conditions, and worked with the chiefs and kind of the working groups of each of the departments, and worked, found their programs, understood their deficiencies, looked for efficiencies in both of the programs, and began to develop floor plans and building summaries, building programs, and then slowly evolved into where we are today. So like I said, go through a summary of that. So, Michelle, can you move to the next slide? Here's a brief, or here's a site plan of Lincoln, 355 Lincoln, off on 3A. So it might be hard for the people at home to see, but 3A is at the bottom of your screen. Essington is at the top of your screen. Shipyard is to the right of your screen, and Fresh Market is to the left of your screen. So the main entrance of the facility for the public will be off of Essington, off this rear access point in Essington, off of this location, and the main entrance is in this area. From Essington, there is a three-story elevation which houses all the program for both facilities. Looking at the 3A elevation, or 3A grade, there is a two-story elevation which houses the fire apparatus, fire departments, as well as the executive administration for both police and fire. Lastly, the last interior ingress point, or ingress point, is again off of Essington, and this is a secured entrance for both police and fire. And it's secured, it's not for the public, but it's really just to help maintain the circulation of, from public to private. Lastly, for, from a secure standpoint, there is a parking structure onsite. So this is solely for both departments, both police and fire, and it's secured parking only. So this is for the day-in and day-out operations, for the patrols, for the police department, as well as personal vehicles between shift changes. So this, really, the whole left-hand portion of the site is strategically only for the departments. Everything to the right along this area is public parking, not only for day-in and day-out visitors, but also, which I'll get into a little more detail when we get into the program, for the, not only department trainings, but outside trainings or meeting rooms for neighboring municipalities or the Town of Hingham. Quickly looking at some of the landscaping, most of the landscaping is going to maintain along Shipyard, all of most of the landscaping that's existing currently along Essington will remain, and then we're utilizing pretty much minimal maintenance, maintenance-free type materials throughout the remainder of the site, just to kind of keep the general maintenance down over the course of the many years for the facility to be in operation. We can go into the next slide. So this is where we get into the program, and as I said earlier, where we dealt with or worked with both the departments, we looked and searched, not searched, but were able to find a lot of the deficiencies in the current program for both police and fire. There was a lot of shortcomings in the locker rooms, interview rooms, cell block, Sallyport, parking, all of the above. So as we utilized the, through the working sessions and through the feasibility study, we were able to capture all those insufficiencies. So I'll go through, it's more, it's easier just to talk through in the colors, but in the upper right corner, in the light green colors, sorry, color, is more of the public spaces, the areas for the public to utilize. So the main entrance, again, right in the center of the back here that faces Essington, you have the main lobby, and then the officer in charge and records right, right front and center. Everything to the right is the large upper right-hand corner is the meeting room, or the EOC training room. So that duplicates for, not only for the police department, but also for the fire department, and then thirdly, works with the emergency operating center in the case of an emergency. So we choose and we always look to utilize that space for multiple operations, you know, not only for both police and fire, but also for in case of emergencies. And then there's some public restrooms off of that. Everything in the light blue is police department operations. So we have the break areas, evidence storage, records, some interview rooms, and kind of some of the back-of-house administration spaces. The lower right-hand corner and the little bit of darker blue areas is more of the private areas for the police department, and that, this lower right-hand corner is the locker rooms for both male and female. So as we went through the program analysis with the police department and the working sessions, there was a large shortcoming of current locker room needs as well as future locker room needs. Right now, there's more of an advancement of female officers. So as we design and provide the locker room count, we always look to provide adaptability with, not necessarily movable walls, but providing walls that you have the ability to shift a wall within the locker rooms if those counts shift, not necessarily 50/50, but a little bit more, two-thirds to one-third, male-female sworn officers. So right now, we're providing 80 male lockers to 20 female lockers. I don't remember the count of the male-female lockers currently, but this is much more than what they currently have. Looking to the lower left-hand corner, this is more of just building support systems, mechanical rooms, electrical room. And then this white area here is the detention block. We have a total of 10 cells in three different blocks. So we have four male cells, four female cells, and two handicap or juvenile cells. And as we, the way we call the detention blocks or cell blocks is that it can be shifted around depending on the amount of prisoners at that time. So again, adaptability for not only current use, but any potential future use for regional lockup or growth, if you will, for the cell count. And then lastly, on this level, is, in this purplish color, is the Sallyport. Right now, the department has a single garage Sallyport, and it's a back, or drive-in only. Here, we're providing four spots, or four vehicle Sallyport and a drive-through, which not only helps with emergency use, but, you know, quickness in bringing the prisoners back as well as leaving if there's an added, sorry, an additional emergency at that time. So, you know, I know I kind of buzzed over that pretty quickly, but, you know, just at this level, mainly police department. I did fail to discuss, and this red room off the main lobby is a triage space for any public that is coming in off the street, and it'll be designated for any sort of initial emergency or some lighter emergency if they came in off this entrance, and it's granted it's connected to the building, so the fire department can either, if they need to, drive around an emergency vehicle, or walk through the building to administer that person. I will like to hand over to Chief Jones if he has anything to add that he may have overlooked or missed on this level on the first floor, because the majority of it is police operations.
Yeah, thanks, Sean. I'm David Jones, Chief of Police for the Town of Hingham. And this facility, especially this floor here, would really allow us to come in line with modern standards and best practices, and allow us to move towards accreditation, which currently, in our current building, we cannot maintain accreditation standards because of the limitations of the building, especially when it comes to the areas that Sean touched on, like the detainee area, detention area. Evidence is another key area that, in this facility, will allow us to become accredited. This building, this lobby area, also allows us to provide public areas to meet with the public, so that the officers can meet in private in a room off the public lobby with people who are coming in to report crimes, so that they're not discussing personal information in front of other people in the lobby, which our current station unfortunately doesn't allow us to do. The training area is an area for us that's going to allow us to train our officers. We currently don't have an area that we can train our staff. We have a roll call room that seats 12. We have 75 sworn part-time and full-time employees and civilian staff, so you can imagine they wouldn't fit in that room. The EOC area and training room would allow us to host training for our agency in-house as well as to host outside training. That would save the town, the departments, some money that would currently have to send officers outside of our department to attend these trainings. So this will allow us to host those, the officers will be able to come to our station, and it'd also allow us to get some seats for free for outside trainings. The Sallyport is a big area here as well. Our current garage, like Sean mentioned, has one space. It's also used for storage. So this facility, this newer facility would allow for, like he said, four vehicles to be in there, would also allow for an ambulance to come in to the secure area to treat a prisoner or detainee that was needing medical attention. Currently, the ambulance cannot get into our garage at all right now, so. I think you've covered pretty much everything else. Thanks.
Thank you. Michelle, to the next floor. So the second floor, which is the main level along 3A, so this is kind of the elevation or the grade that we see from 3A, is, as you can see, this is majority of the apparatus for the fire department. So everything in red is the fire department, everything blue is the police department. So it's...
Sorry?
Everything in the dark red area is what's called the hot zone of the fire department, and I'll let Chief Murphy discuss that a little bit in more detail. But we have a total of five bay apparatus along the bottom of the screen. Everything to the back is more of storage areas, decon area, turnout gear slash locker room, and then showers and maintenance areas back here, and then more storage to the front of the apparatus bay. Everything to the back, sorry? Everything to the back here is more administration spaces, office spaces, conference room, and report-writing zone here for not only this department, but, oh, sorry, this station, but the rest of the departments. Everything to the right, everything in the lighter blue, is more police administration. And then the lower left here, the larger block, this is the simulation training area. So kind of continuing on what Chief Jones was just discussing about training room, this is in addition to that for simulation training, whether it's for defensive tactics, sorry, drawing a blank.
Scenario-based.
Scenario-based training, you know, everything that's, whether it's virtual or physical training. And then the light green zone here is a wellness center, which will be shared for both departments. So trying to centralize it right off of the apparatus bay, so in case of an emergency, fire department, if they were in the wellness area, exit into the apparatus bay, then leave the building. And then conversely, on the same instance for the police department on the right-hand side. So this is more of the private area for the building, for the public, with the exception of any sort of interviewing for any of the officers or fire department. Chief Murphy, don't want to put you on the spot, but anything you would like to add to the apparatus bay?
Hi, Sean. Thank you. Now, I just want to add that the, you know, current layout that you're seeing right now shows two engines and two ambulances, and it also shows the fact that it is being designed to accommodate a ladder truck, which is the point. So this is something that, you know, when I started here, this used to be the makeup of having a primary engine and a reserve engine at each of the outside stations, and as the trucks have gotten bigger, we've been unable to do that. So this is kind of, you know, what it used to be, and this is the ideal situation for us, that, you know, if, for example, one of the trucks doesn't start, then the other trucks are definitely moved into. The only other thing I was going to comment is Sean talked a little bit about the hot zone. So for any of you that have been down to Station 2, then you kind of see the fact that the apparatus bay separates the living quarters from the bunk rooms and all that stuff, and including where the bathrooms are. So the firefighters are constantly walking across the apparatus floor, and that's the term that, you know, we clear, or we kind of consider that the hot zone, which is where the, you know, carcinogenic type of chemicals or anything else might be because of the engines or even leaking oil and all that stuff. So the current layout here, as you can see in the back, Sean touched on it a little bit, there's a whole proper decon area that will allow the firefighters, when they return from a late fire type of incident, to properly decon. There's also a space there for them to properly wash their turnout gear and their uniforms that they were wearing underneath their turnout gear. So this is all things that we don't have at the current layout, and this is definitely something that we're very much looking forward to. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, next floor, please. So the third floor is the executive administration for the police department on the right-hand side, everything in blue, so the chiefs, captain's offices, conference rooms, administration. Everything to the left in red is the fire department bunk rooms, which, the bunk rooms are on the back. This is also providing expandability for the current shifts of the fire department. Currently, there are four firefighters per shift. This is for the future, potentially for six firefighters per shift, so we have six individual bunk rooms with captains' bunks on the end. And speaking to the male-to-female ratio for firefighters, this is how that is solved. Each of the bunk rooms is independent, you know, male or female, and then private restrooms, male or female, right outside the bunk wing. In the lighter red area to the middle-left is the dayroom break area for the fire department. And then lastly, the dark red area, which is right off of the apparatus bay, is a mezzanine, so that's utilized for additional storage, as well as duplicates for training opportunities for the fire department, which they don't currently have in North Station, for extraction trainings, repelling trainings, et cetera. Just, I mean, I'm sure I can, or Chief Jones can speak to a little bit further if there are further questions, but this really kind of brings the program to a whole, like I said, provides adaptability for future growth, you know, not necessarily empty rooms, but opportunity for change with either open workspace plans or providing those extra bunks for the fire department. Next slide. So these next few slides here, just some brief images of the exterior of the building. I won't get into much detail unless it comes up, but looking for more of the industrial imagery of the ship, current shipyard, the heavier base on the first level here, this is actually the elevation that faces Essington and the main entrance in the center. So a brick material at the lower level, everything above the lowest level is a metal panel product, and then curtain wall system or glazing system. You have a flat roof, which is prepared or prepped for future solar ray, so per MESS code, it's called, it's solar-ready. So we're providing that opportunity, not only within the structure, but as well as, you know, providing the infrastructure for solar ray. So that's where there's a lot of the flat roof that you see in these images. Next slide. This is elevation along, sorry, 3A, so you can see the five apparatus bays, which Chief Joan, sorry, Chief Murphy spoke to in great detail. So the more grounded material, if you will, the brick from the fire department side, and then everything to the right in this image is the metal panel. It's a little hard to see at this elevation, but there are windows that are off of each of the office spaces. I think it's just the angle of this image, so we'll correct that in the next go-around, but just a continuation of that industrial feel. Next slide, please. This is just a little bit of another image facing Shipyard and 3A, again, the apparatus bay. Next slide. And lastly, this is the corner of Shipyard and Essington, more of the public area, and then the lower single-story structure in the front here, that's the training room, and you can kind of see how the slope of the site slopes up towards 3A. So that's, we're utilizing the existing site to capture the reduction of grade modifications and then earth modifications to help reduce some of the costs as we progress. Before I move on, a few other kind of high-level items. We're utilizing, you know, best practices of energy conservation. We worked heavily with Hingham Net Zero to, you know, create an all-electric building. So 95, 96% of the building is all-electric, with the exception of just some of the heat recovery in the apparatus bay, which I'm sure you might be able to understand, there's a lot of heat loss at those times when those doors are opening up. So we're utilizing a fossil fuel, a gas, natural gas to reheat that space, but everything else is all electric. So we're looking to capture as much Hingham Municipal Light and Powers resources, so that we're helping not only the environment, but also, you know, the Town of Hingham in that respect. I think that covers most of it. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think I'll hand it over to Paul and discuss budget, then we'll answer any questions.
Great, thank you.
Thanks for having me here to talk about the budget. The budget is definitely less aesthetic...
Paul, can you state your name and pitch for the record?
Oh, hi, I'm Paul Callis from Hill International. We're the owner's project manager for the project.
Great, thank you.
And getting right into it, we get less aesthetically pleasing-looking images in our part of the presentation, but very, very important, this is the budget, that we have, this is a slightly distilled version of a longer version that I have as a handout that I'll give to you after I complete talking about this. The cost to be able to build this project, as far as the budget is concerned, the total project budget that we calculate is $49,575,000 for everything. And just to kind of walk you through the way this is formatted, in the rows, you have your different line items with subtotals and totals, and then the columns are, first, the description of what the line item is, the project budget for that line item, and then the next column is the funded budget, which would be the budgeted items that have been already appropriated for in previous town meetings. And then the third column, or fourth column, is the expenditures to date against those funded items and what the balance is. So our budget of $49,575,000, the, is made up of $39 million for construction, $3.6 million for architectural and engineering services, $1,700,000 for administrative costs, and then for furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And these are all allowances that make up that total of $3,500,000, which brings us to a subtotal of $47,650,288. And we have a project contingency of $1,924,000, and that brings us to the $49,575,000. So that's the, for the total project, and thus far, in the square that's on the bottom left, you see the appropriations to date, which is, which are all listed there, and each of those three appropriations currently total $3,435,000, and you'll see a blank there for Town Meeting 2022 for construction. That will be filled in at a slightly later time. We have the, we're getting a 60% construction documents estimate that's going to better inform our construction line item number, and then be able to put a little finer point as to what that appropriation would need to be, to be able to, to be able to build the building, basically. So that is, that's what we have for the budget, and just a general overview of the schedule. All things going well, approval by your group, town meeting later on, et cetera. The schedule is to finish the construction contract documents and be out to bid the 7th of December, and we would have a, we would have a general contractor bid opening that would be the 8th of February, and shortly thereafter, execute a construction contract, be under construction the end of February of 2023, and be complete with building construction in August of '24. And then after the building construction is complete, you got to fit out the building with the furnishings, finish the punch list, move any equipment, all those types of things, which would all be completed in fall of 2023, or 2024, rather, and then close out after that. So roughly around October of, 1st of 2024, the building would be occupied. So anyway, that concludes what I wanted to present, and I'll just leave you these copies of the budget that the building committee is very familiar with, that we review these on a monthly basis.
Paul, thank you very much. I know that we have Bob Garrity here. Bob, do you want to add anything to the presentation?
Bob Garrity, One Plymouth River Road, Hingham. I'm the chairman of the Public Safety Facility Building Committee. Don't have any prepared remarks, but I thought I'd comment on some of what these gentlemen just talked about, to fill in a couple of the blanks and the questions that you may have already been thinking about. First of all, let's see, I guess we've been at it for about two years with our, with our building committee, and most, well, nearly all that time has been involved in preparing the initial feasibility study, then going, you know, confirming that that was the right-size project for this site, and that the two requirements would all come together, we confirmed that. We then got into... We then got into the development of the schematic documents, where you really start looking at different options for the site, and at that point, we get heavily into talking with the Police Department and the Fire Department. The architect has tremendous amount of experience in dealing with public safety facility projects in the OPM too, and does also do that. There, as you probably know, under the statutory requirements, the OPM is the town's agent and paid agent, true, but agent in all of this. So they really are our right arm in making sure the designer is doing the right thing, the police and fire department, the user agencies are being reasonable, and then later on, their role gets a lot heavier than it currently is, because if and when we go to construction, the OPM is really onsite every day, they'll, people manning the trailer, reviewing all the shop drawings, and the architect will be too, reviewing all the contract payment requests, and they'll have a full-time presence out there, and they do a lot of work. So both KBA and Hill have done a tremendous job here. The user agencies have really done a tremendous job. The police and the Fire Department have been great to work with, very reasonable. You know, at fairly early in the, in the discussions, we did ask them to, they and the architect to try to shave the program, shave the size of the building, and nobody likes to shave that when you're a user agency and you haven't gotten a new building in fifty or sixty years, but they did, and I think it really helped quite a bit. I think we reduced the size by about ten, eleven thousand square feet, something like that. But they've been extremely cooperative, which is one of the main points I just wanted to make. One of the other points is when Paul was just going over the budget, and, you know, very broad-scale budget, we have a very detailed budget that adds up to each one of the line items Paul mentioned, but one point is, if you just look at the project total, we have forty-nine million, five seventy-five for the total project, by the way, not including the acquisition costs, the property acquisition costs, but the forty-nine million, five seventy-five, and then we have the three million, four hundred and thirty-five million dollars already appropriated. So if you were to ask us today, how much do we think we will be asking for at Town Meeting, it would be roughly the forty-nine, five seventy-five less, the three million, four thirty-five, so it'd be about forty-six million dollars. And then I'd also want to say where we're at in the construction estimating department is, within two weeks, we'll, we should be getting new estimates, as Paul mentioned and Sean, at the sixty percent of construction documents. Now, construction documents is the third phase of the design. By the time construction documents are complete, it's virtually ready, it has been designed. And then the next stage is taking those construction documents and turning them into bid documents. So you incorporate like a general conditions, which is really the town's contract form, you know, bond forms, that type of information, a lot of procedural information, but the, so basically, my point is, what I'm trying to make is, the design will essentially be done by the time we get, reach a hundred percent construction documents, but by sixty percent construction documents, which we will be there in about two weeks, it is nearly done from a design perspective. Now, in this project, we have done what I call the gold standard of cost estimating. We require, by the contracts of the architect as well as the OPM, we require them both to hire separate cost estimators for the three major points in the project, and they've done that through the, well, let's see, the feasibility study originally, then the design development documents we got, those are our, that's where the thirty-nine million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar figure comes in, and that was at the design development phase. The next estimate is at the sixty percent construction document phase, which we should have within two weeks. And the processes, each of these, these firms hired their own expert in cost estimating. After they do their thing, everybody gets together and they do a reconciled cost estimate. So the, you know, different estimators can look at different projects in a different way, at different elements, but when they sit down, they really all know, they're talking the same thing, they might just have different breakdowns of estimates. So they reconcile the estimate, so you've got two professionals with the assistance of KBA and the OPM, developing essentially the reconciled cost estimate, which will be the, the dollar amount that we will be relying upon when we ask you and the AdCom and ultimately the Town Meeting to approve a construction budget, which will get us through construction. And what we will be requesting is the construction costs, as well as the administrative costs of continuing the OPM, as well as the architect through the construction phase of the work, and we have allowances in there for furnishings, fixtures, and equipment that are all, all the type of furniture and some specialized equipment that is built into the overall project budget on this type of a new project. So I just thought I would point out that, and if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Thanks.
Bob, thank you very much. I guess I'll start with questions. Sean, why don't you go back up, because you might be the best person to, at least start with some of the engineering-type questions. The fire trucks are going to be able to enter on Essington, right, and go out. They don't need to back into the bays, is that correct?
They will be backing into the bays, but if you, sorry, yeah, go sightplan. Sorry, thank you. So the fire apparatus will be returning ninety percent of the time from Essington, coming up here, coming from the lower section, coming up this elevated ramp, coming to the front apron, and then backing in this way. Would never exit out beyond a 3A. Depending on which vehicle is returning, there is some opportunity to kind of pull a two, three, or four-point turn in the apron, you know, off of 3A and then back in. But all, all the apparatus will be backing into the apparatus bay.
Okay. I, I thought that the bays were going to be open in a way that the fire trucks could just pull through and avoid backing up. Is that a change?
That, we did review that very early on. Unfortunately, based on the grade changes of both Essington and 3A, and the, I don't want to call it the proximity of the site, but those were very early on conversations we had. I don't want to speak for Chief Murphy directly, but, you know, this operation and how they could return from either 3A or Essington, they were okay with that. I don't say okay, but it was, it was an acceptable solution based on where we were. Chief Murphy, if you are able, if you want to speak to a little bit more to that?
Thank you, Sean. So if you look at Headquarters, then we obviously have to back into that station, and unfortunately, that kind of requires the crews to actually block traffic in front of it. So that's, and actually, the same thing happens with the car station down at 230 North Street, Station Two. So the ability to be able to back into the station without actually stopping traffic was a requirement for us. And yes, we were looking originally at the drive-through bay, but it just wasn't going to work with the site, but that's the reason why you actually see the five bays out in front, because we wanted to make sure that we didn't actually stack vehicles either. So if you look at, for example, at Headquarters, we only have the two main bays facing on, on Main Street, and if we have another truck behind the one that's in front, you can't get it up. So that's why these were shorter bays, that were designed so that you could still, you know, have multiple vehicles leaving at the same time or whatever, and didn't cause any problems. As Sean said, most of the time, they're going to come back by Essington, but that front apron is large enough that they could actually come swing off of, you know, 3A, just kind of pull in there and then do their backup turn without actually stopping traffic or anything else. So we're satisfied with this solution, and like I said, you know, we were looking at other things, but the topography just didn't last for it.
Great, thank you. And my second question is, if you go to the, the other slides of the sec, of the other floors, so you spoke briefly about the additional living facilities for additional firefighters, and it's our goal to hopefully hire some new firefighters in the coming year or two, but we're also looking to hire new police officers in the coming year or two. So having done some space acquisition work in my career, I'm mindful that new buildings need to allow for organizational growth. We know the nature of police work is changing. We talked about additional firefighters. How does this building allow for expanded growth, future growth, if necessary, of both organizations?
Right. So on the Fire Department side, that's a little bit simpler, that would be on the next level down. Yeah, thank you. So there, there are these kind of open workroom areas, office spaces, so where, you know, there are adaptability for the future growth of administration in this location. On the Police Department side, we do have some larger offices, we have the workroom, I believe, I'm trying to blank, and this, is this detectives?
Detective.
Yeah, detectives here. And currently, you're at four?
Three and a supervisor.
Yeah, three and supervisor. So as you can see, we're showing six desks here, you know, so we're allocating the, the space for future furniture, you know, as the budget kind of gets aligned, we're in construction, we're doing the design of the furniture, we will, hopefully, with the budget allows, we'll be able to provide that future furniture growth and the adaptability for additional detectives, additional school resource officers, you know, we provided the space in the room that's outfitted for that current use. But we're also showing the furniture as well, so, you know, we want to provide all the furniture that could fit in that space for that future growth. But we're not anticipating any, any outbuildings or additions, if you will, to the outside of the building. I don't know if that's where you're leaning towards, but we're providing that, that growth within the footprint.
Great, thank you. All right, let me turn to my colleagues, if they have any questions. Joe, do you want to start us off?
Sure. So thank you, I really, you know, I was there at the inception of the committee, and Bob, you've, you know, you took it on with a smile, so, so thank you. And your committee really has done incredible work, not to take away from anyone else, but really, it's, it's really been your committee that's been driving this, so we owe you a debt of thanks. Thank you. And I'm a very strong advocate of moving forward with this project. I'm going to go over questions that I have, and please don't take anything I'm saying as a lack of enthusiasm, I just want to make sure that we're all clear about the issues. We know how to address the issues as they come up. First, first one, the site, if we can, I don't know if you can go back to the, maybe it's the initial one where it shows, right, exactly. So we are now going to be one of the tenants, if you will, at the Shipyard. Do we have the rights of way to do what we're planning to do off of the various roads? Do we control, do we have the ability to move in and out as, as is being anticipated? Because we're moving into basically a planned community. So are, are we set? So can we go forward with this plan, assuming the Town Meeting approves it and the town voters approve it? Do we have the rights of way and the other rights to move forward? And I'm not sure who-
I can take that.
Okay, sure.
So I've been working with Susan Murphy, our General Real Estate Counsel for the town, on exactly that project. We've been meeting with all of the stakeholders that own easement rights up and down Essington Drive. We've been working, obviously, with the Mass DOT about access rights off of 3A. All of that is in the works, the 3A, the 3A component will be done, I believe, in time for November first. Susan and I believe that we'll be able to get all of the agreements in place for November first. If not, we'll likely have at least MOUs in place if the legal agreements haven't been completed. But that will be a game time decision as we work towards that. We have nine different entities that need to get through their legal, their own legal process, that we can't control their timing. But they're all aware, we've had five or six meetings with them already, there's been no showstoppers, nobody has thrown up a concern that we can't solve. A lot of it is like site concerns, that we want to make sure that, you know, Bright Horizons has access rights, and they want to make sure the construction workers aren't swearing near the children. So we're going to put them, you know, tell them to be careful, have a smoking section away from the Bright Horizons, little things like that.
We're going to give them elocution lessons?
We will give them elocution lessons. So it, it's that kind of thing that we're working with, with all the stakeholders, and we believe we'll be able to get through all of that by the end of the-
Great.
-before November first.
Environmental concerns, are there any issues that we need to be sensitive to in terms of flooding, conservation issues? Are there any roadblocks that anyone anticipates here? And I'm, my question's, I'm not going to direct it to particular persons, so whoever is most inclined to answer, please do.
So-
I can respond to that?
Yeah, you are here.
JR, great, that's right. I forgot JR was on the line.
Thank you, JR.
Joe, the, in answer to your question, I've been working closely with the design engineers to cover our bases on all of our environmental concerns. We are not going to have any issues with conservation, storm drainage, we are able to manage stormwater onsite, and we have the conveyance capacity to meet any permit requirements that we need to. In addition to that, we'll be able to meet treatment requirements as well. We've identified a, we've identified where we will be discharging sewage, and we've also have a design in place for water supply. We're fine-tuning some of the details on each of those elements, but we have a good understanding, and, and I'm very confident that we will get there in terms of getting the final design prior to November.
So JR, if I can just pick up on that, I believe Chief Murphy talked about, you know, in certain cases, there's, they're leaking oil, for example. Do we have the facilities, or will we have the facilities in place just to make sure that we're not creating any environmental concerns at the Shipyard?
Yes, so, for example, in the event of an oil spill, we have a stormwater treatment system that will isolate the spill and allow us to remove the contaminant from the treatment structure before it discharges.
Yeah, okay, great.
We all, sorry, we also have an oil-water separators, you know, both in the Sallyport parking structure and the apparatus bay, so.
Good. Let me ask you about parking. I, I think you mentioned that there's secured parking. What is that? What does that mean?
Fenced parking, you know, so looking at this plan here, we have a gate at this location, a gate at this location, and a gate at the top of the location. So that's solely card access, if you will, for sworn officers, Fire Department, just, just for the two-
Sure, okay.
So that's, we've, we've calculated, we've been going back and forth a little bit, but we've calculated in providing enough parking for day-in-day operations for the both departments at shift change.
I'm going to pick up on what our, what our chair has mentioned in terms of opportunities for growth, and I'll start with parking. So is there going to be adequate parking for the public today, and what we're anticipating public needs are 10 years from now?
Sure. So we are providing a sufficient amount of public parking, and that is really more calculated and geared towards the training room or the meeting room. We're providing sixty seats per the zoning bylaws, that's categorized as an auditorium, which is one spot per three seats, so that's twenty spots. We are providing, I'm going to get this wrong, I'm sure, I think we're at fifty-five public parking spots from the, from the secured gate to the, to the backside here of the public area, with handicap spots. We also are providing a number of electrical vehicle charging stations in this upper location. We're also providing infrastructure for future growth of electrical vehicle charging stations onsite for both public and for the departments. We're, for the building electrical service at day, opening day, we're providing a total of eight spots that will be powered by the building, and then for future growth, it'll, it'll be the determination with Hingham Municipal Light and Power.
Right, great.
But we're providing that future growth for that portion of it. But we're providing that future growth for that portion of it.
And when our chair asked about future growth, I heard a response concerning, you know, furniture coming in, things like that. But what about, are there any modular opportunities? For example, rooms that are built larger that we could now subdivide in the future if we need to have the potential for that? And I'm also thinking, for example, of holding cells, whether or not there's the opportunity to expand them if needed.
Holding cells are very challenging, they're very costly for expansion. We did, when we initially did the programming, I think we were slightly larger, and then when we were asked to bring the cell count down, we went to the, I don't call it bare minimum, but correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe 10 still treats our cells as a regional holding facility.
Yes.
So that was the bare minimum, so, for that program element. The other areas, some of the larger workrooms is the detective area, next floor, thanks. There's a little work zone, like a breakout, not breakout, but a conference area within the detective suite. I mean, that'd be more of an operational need if it was chosen to be broken up into separate offices. But we are providing the space within to furnish it out for expansion.
Got it, okay.
If that's clear.
Can I just clarify part of the answer, Joe? I just wanted to double check, so the cell count is, meets the accreditation standard requirements, right?
Yes, it does, yeah.
Just as a basis of comparison, what is our current square footage for North Station and the police headquarters? And then what are we going to have in this new facility? I'm just trying to get a sense of how much we've added on. Do we have those numbers?
We do.
We have them in hand. And we can get it later if you want.
Yeah, I don't want to misspeak. I don't want to misspeak, but we're, but right now, we're right around 49,500 square feet for the new facility. But I don't want to misspeak with the two current stations.
A lot of that's shared too.
Okay. Chief Jones, this is really for you, you mentioned accreditation. What it, who's accredited, what is the accreditation, and why is that important?
So there's two organizations that accredit police departments, one's Kalia, that's a national accreditation, and then there's Massachusetts has an accreditation board as well. So they look at a number of standards and it touches basically all your policies and all areas in the station. Big ones are the detainee area, evidence is obviously key. So this station would allow us to meet those standards, you know, without any problems. We can't meet them now in our current facility.
We can't meet them, but does that make a difference? Why is this important?
It does, because in order to get accredited, you have to meet those standards. There's certain ways to get waivers that would allow you, for example, we don't have a dispatch center in our police department, it's regional. So we'd get a waiver for that, because they have an accreditation standard for dispatch that's required. You can get waivers for certain things like that, certain things you can't get around. Like our evidence room right now would not meet, there's no way you could make it meet accreditation standards.
So would accreditation improve police ability, for example, to comply with court orders, hearings? I'm trying to understand the benefit of getting the accreditation.
So accreditation will bring our department in line with best practices across the state, it's constantly updated. I forget what version number they're on now, but their accreditation commission meets regularly. They update standards, they publish them, and any changes that need to be made at the agency level, whether it's a policy or, you know, some process that we do at the station, we'll make those changes, then when we're for re-accreditation, we'd put those forth and then meet those standards at that point.
Can I just add some comments? So chiefs, one of the things that you've explained to me before is, one of the accreditation standards is that juveniles and juvenile cells are not in line with male cells, for instance, or adult cells. And that's important because we're trying to protect the children from those types of influences. I think that's what Selectman Fisher is trying to understand, is the benefit of the accreditation itself.
Yeah, so that's one thing, that's also a state requirement, DPH requirement, that juvenile holding areas have to be sight and sound isolated from adult prisoners. Our current facility, there's no way at all we could possibly do that. In fact, we fail our inspection every time because of, just because of that reason. So it's not sight and sound isolated. This would allow us to have a sight and sound isolated place for juvenile detainees.
So it's, we want the accreditation not so we can have another star on our bulletin board, but because it actually delivers better police practices for the town?
Absolutely does, yes.
So I'm going to turn to Chief Murphy, ask a question, then I'm going to ask the same question to you, which is, why do we need to do this now? Why is this so important that we can't put it off for another couple of years? And I'm going to turn to our fire chief, and then I'll get back to you.
Thanks, Joe. So if you look at the history of this project, this is something that has really been going on since at least 2014 very actively. And actually, what's interesting too is, Tom knows this, I've gone back through previous town warrants and found just about everyone like predecessors going back to the 70s talking about the condition of the fire stations and the fact that the facilities need to be upgraded infrastructure-wise, and they just don't meet our current needs. So this is not something new, this has been, you know, a, something that we've needed to address for a long time. And like I said, I mean, back in 2014, when they started working on renovating the current location, that's when they kept on bumping up into all the rees, basically kind of restrictions or limiting type of things, they just wouldn't allow that. So for many different reasons, I mean, I summarize the need for this as based on the size of the current building, that it doesn't have enough, whether it's enough space for our current apparatus, it doesn't have enough storage space, it doesn't have the proper layout of milking of quarters, it doesn't have enough space for our turnout gear, the list continues on. So that's the first issue, is the size. The second issue is some of the safety concerns, specific with, you know, whether it's fitness or lack of a fitness room. And cardiac is the number one leading cause of death for firefighters. The number two leading cause is cancer. And as I already touched on it earlier, the current station doesn't really have some of the best options for us to, you know, properly clean the gear, to isolate the firefighters from the gear when they're not, you know, using it, whatever the case. And then like I said, the final thing that, you know, we look at is infrastructure itself. The, most of the building is original, it's got the original 1941 boiler. It's got the original roof on the main section of the building. We have replaced the roofs on the flat sections, but the main roof needs to be, you know, replaced. It's got a plumbing that runs under the apparatus floor, it's original. Most of the electrical is original. It really is time to, you know, to kind of upgrade what we can provide for our firefighters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief.
Thanks, Joe. So, just like Chief Murphy, our biggest challenge is space. So we just don't have the space in our current facility. When we moved in, we were already out of space, they ran out of places to put things, that they moved from Lincoln Street over to here. And that's why you see in our Sallyport, our garage area is all storage. That's why you see we lost two holding cells there to storage. And then when the regional dispatch center came online, we lost a significant amount of space on the second floor. We lost our entire records division and that whole wing of the second floor. So like Chief Murphy, space is a huge need for us. I mean, the building, our department's basically busting at the seams, we have officers doubled, tripled. We have five people sharing one office downstairs. But, I mean, some other issues are no parking. We don't have enough parking spaces for all our police vehicles, let alone at shift change when we have, you know, the shift that's working and the oncoming officers there. It's a real, real problem for the parking. We don't have any meeting rooms, we don't have anywhere to meet with the public privately, outside of that cramped lobby that we have now. There's no training areas for our department, and you can see in the news with scrutiny, police departments are being put under the importance of training. Our department's very well trained, but we have to hold our training elsewhere. We can't have any training at our facility, so we have to find other locations to do it, whether it's other police departments or, you know, other agencies in town that can allow us to use their rooms. Locker rooms is another huge area. We don't have any room in our lockers right now, every single locker is issued. So we don't have room for one more person. Like I mentioned before, we have 75 sworn officers, full-time and part-time, and we have civilian staff on top of that. We don't have any lockers to give our part-time employees, and a lot of the civilian staff don't have lockers. So these are, these are critical issues for our staff, and the community also expects more from our agency and us to be able to provide a service that we can't provide in this current space.
Can I add to it, as a third member of this team, is, you know, as part of what I see in my world is the issue around recruitment and retention, that's another issue. And so we're trying to recruit new officers, new firefighters. Modern facilities are a standard, and it's an expectation of people that have a lot of options and where they want to work. We have to retain our already dedicated sworn public safety officers, and we don't want them going to other communities that offer better amenities, and then we end up with lesser officers or lesser firefighters. So recruitment and retention is a big deal as well.
That's a great point too, because in one of the public tours that we did initially, leading up to the last town meeting, we had somebody come through that is looking to be a police officer, I think he's on our list currently, and he couldn't believe the locker rooms especially, and what our officers are, you know, faced with, trying to store their equipment down there. So to Tom's point, it is a huge factor when we're trying to hire new officers or get officers as a lateral transfer from another agency to come here. When they come and look at our facility, we don't have a lot to offer.
Yeah, I mean, I've done the tour both police and fire, and I think it's urgent that we move forward. I just want to make sure that we get that message out effectively, that the public really understands this is not of the situation, we can put it off for another day, another year, another couple of years. It's now, and we've put it off too long. Chief Murphy, in terms of the site for this location, is it appropriate in terms of reaching the areas that Station 2 needs to reach when there are fire emergencies? Is this an adequate site?
Yes, Joe, it is. So originally back in 2017, when we were looking to move away from the current site at 230 North Street, we kind of looked at our call line, both current and what we anticipated, and we recognized that the 3A corridor is actually the ideal location for it. Since then, we've run those numbers again, and it's confirming what we found back in 2017. The other interesting thing with this, and it's no surprise to us that, you know, that kind of makes sense, because if you look at the, you know, higher density housing up there, whether it's the shipyard, whether it's the, you know, some of the places on Beale Street, whatever the case, there's more dense housing in that area than other parts of town, with the exception, obviously, like Lynn and Fons. But the other thing with it too, is that that's where some of our places, like the Candido Road Nursing Homes, Sergeant Willie V. Terry, the, you know, those are where our patients come from, that type of facilities. The other thing with this too, is that if you look at the current map of where our stations are, you can actually see that there is a little bit of an overlap between headquarters and between Station 2. So that was one of the things that we had to make sure of as well, is that moving the current location further away from headquarters is still viable, and it is, because there is that overlap. So we will not be able to, we're not going to lose any, you know, parts of our service area by expanding this or moving it, and in reality, we'll actually get faster response time to where most of our calls are.
Great, great, thank you. Sean, you had talked about that the building is moving towards or is 95% plus electric. What happens when there's a power failure? Is there a backup system so that we've got power for fire and police?
Correct, yeah, so there's an onsite generator, backup for three days, 72 hours, and that is diesel-powered. I think we're at a thousand kilowatt generator right now, so again, three days to fully power the building 24/7. As long, in addition to a roll-up situation where you can rent a generator from somewhere off-site, plug it into your building, and then have it 24/7 again.
I got one last question that goes to budget. I want to ask, how solid is our budget in light of the inflation that we've been seeing, the high rate of inflation? And quite frankly, I'd like to know what inflation rate is assumed in the budget process? If you can come up to the mic.
The construction cost estimate that's included within the budget includes a, includes escalation due to inflation. And the exact percentage that we used was contemporary as of this past spring. And at that time, we saw that there was still some inflation pressures that were still occurring. And we had included some, an additional contingency for fuel escalation beyond the escalation that was just on construction prices in order to basically cover the, what we think what might be the cost of the project when it is actually bid.
So you're comfortable with the cost estimate, given the inflation that we're seeing?
Yes, and that's because of the escalation built into the estimate, and then plus a little, some $650,000 of contingency that we saw as a result of, you know, back in April, May, when we saw fuel prices spike.
Thank you. Liz?
Thank you, thank you all. I just have a couple of follow-up questions. Chief Jones, I know you spoke about the accreditation standards, and thank you for explaining that. Are there other standards that we aren't meeting with this current design, or other things that we should be looking at?
Well, this current design will meet all the standards. We've worked closely with KBA to make sure that, because they know we're moving towards accreditation, that we wouldn't have any issues with that. We also have officers, myself and the deputy chief, that are trained in the accreditation process and are familiar with it, so there won't be any issues at all with accreditation with this new facility.
Okay, excellent, thank you. In looking at the first-level floor plan and just thinking about the first aid triage, kind of what do you, what do you expect to happen there? Is it just thinking through if that's a big enough space for the type of emergencies or walk-in emergencies that you're seeing currently, and what future might look like?
That's exactly what it'd be, if somebody that walked in off the street looking for medical attention. The front of the building, where the bays are, there's no public parking there. So people coming into the building would come into our, the police lobby, and we could have the fire come down and do that, but it's, and Chief Murphy can speak to it too, but for our purposes, that is an adequate size based on the amount of walk-ins that we have at our current building.
Okay.
It would be an appropriately sized area for that.
Okay. And have you thought about having the social worker in that area? I think I saw the social worker office is somewhere else, but is that a current need where you would need the social worker closer to that triage area or the lobby?
No, she, our current social worker, the office is on the second floor. Also, with the domestic violence advocates are up there also, so that allows, if somebody comes in that wants to meet with one of them, they'd go up to the second floor and have some privacy away from the main public lobby.
Okay.
And they're obviously mobile, so they can go down and meet with somebody downstairs too, if they needed to.
Okay, great. And thinking about the cell blocks, I know there's been a lot of discussion about what's a reasonable size and what we need. I know you talked about this is the minimum for the regional holding facility. So you feel confident that that's a good size for current and future needs?
I do, yeah, I'm comfortable with the number of cells that we have. And it's just not the number, it's the layout, so they're designed in blocks. So that if you, and they're blocks of four for the main cell. So if you had five male prisoners, you could have four and one, one in the, in that second block, and you still have space in the, with those two juvenile and handicap cells. If you had, you know, a female prisoner, transgender person coming, you could have them house separately, or juvenile. So I'm confident with the layout that KBA's designed, that we're going to be able to meet the needs of the community.
Okay, great, and that kind of leads into my next question, I guess. Is their current design thinking that the cell blocks or even the locker room should be more gender-neutral? Is that kind of on people's minds, or?
So on the cell block side, it goes back to the blocks, right? So you have, it could really be divided up anyway.
Okay.
It doesn't have to go male, male, female, female, handicap, or juvenile, so it can really shift around. So that's really, today's standard is creating that flexibility.
Okay.
I mean, obviously you can't schedule crime, so it has to be flexible. On the handicap, sorry, on the locker room side, it's kind of a, I don't call it a new age thing, it's not, but, you know, being able to provide flexible walls- new age things, it's not, but, you know, being able to provide flexible walls within, you know, the justification between the male and female lockers might turn into an operational piece, but if, if it came to that situation, there would be the opportunity to, I don't call segregate because that's not the right term, but, you know, keep a few lockers to another portion within the male or female locker.
Okay.
But there are a number of private toilet rooms throughout the building, which would be, you know, male or female. So, you know, the only area where it is grouped toilet rooms or toilet areas are in the locker rooms.
Okay, okay. I mean, I think a lot of our questions are kind of surrounding just future growth and flexibility and wanting to feel that we're not going to outgrow this building by the time it's built and certainly not in the next 50-plus year or so. Thank you. Let's see. I did want to ask also about, I know Joe touched on the electric building capacity and certainly appreciate all the work that you did there and the work with net zero. Can you just kind of, just so people know, what is, what is that in terms of the additional cost or additional work, having it be that kind of 90-plus percent?
There's a little bit of an upcharge on the electrical end, just on the designed piece, more upfront costs, you know, at the time of construction, the time installation. But long-term, it's, that's, that's where your buyback is, you know, so, you know, and this type of system, it's, it's all water. You're pushing water around, you know, rather than pushing air around, so it's more of just pumps and electricity, so lesser on the maintenance end and lesser on the energy consumption. So again, a little bit more upfront cost in the beginning, but long-term, your buyback is much, much quicker. I don't remember the exact buyback period, but we did, did do that analysis when we were going back and forth with Hingham Net Zero and it was quicker.
Okay, excellent. And I know we talked about the, the cost estimation process, which sounds like it's quite rigorous and you have the professional cost estimators. So it sounds like in two weeks, we'll have a more accurate construction number and that contingency number will likely be updated as well? Is that right?
Correct. So in two weeks, like, like Bob said, we're going to have two estimates come from both, both estimators and we'll have a week of reconciliation.
Okay.
So the escalation percentage that we utilize, I think it was five and a half percent for the spring into, into next spring. Typically, it's usually around 3% every year, so there's a little bit of buffer there. And then the allowance, not the allowances, the contingencies will be tighter because it's, it's a more easily identified construction documents to budget or to estimate. So we'll be closer to the real number.
Okay.
It's an easy way to say it.
Excellent.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I told them, you'll get over there when you, when these guys are done.
Okay. No, I appreciate you answering all of our questions. Great, I don't have any further questions, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Seen none here, let's go to Zoom. Anybody on Zoom have any questions or comments? If you could just kind of raise your hand, either virtually or physically. Okay, not seeing anyone. All right, so with that, I want to echo what Joe said to Bob and his committee and his team. Thank you for all the work you've done to get us this point, the chiefs as well. Thank you all. But we have a lot of work ahead of us. In the fall, we are rolling out a public information campaign and I'm assuming we're going to continue the tours, correct, Tom?
Yes, we will.
The tours, so the tours that we did last spring of the Police Department and the West England Fire Station were very popular with individuals who got an opportunity to see those facilities and we're going to continue that as well as engage in some other outreach going forward. So I appreciate you, to your team and thank you, chiefs, for your time tonight.
Thank you.
You are excused to go to your next meeting.
Right through that door.
To go there again, yes. All right, next item on the agenda is potential vote to delegate authority to the town administrator regarding appointment of election officers under Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 12. I see our town clerk, Carol, how are you tonight?
I'm Carol Falvey, town clerk for the town of Hingham. So you, we actually have two votes for you this evening. The second one related to the New Votes Act and, and this one as well, which is to echo what the chief said, a best practice and something that I decided to talk to town council about to propose for you. So I think John has presented the language for the motion.
Yes, yeah, so it just, so could you, so I guess.
Just talk a little bit about it, sure. So there is the opportunity for towns to appoint election workers on a yearly basis. And I'm not sure what Hingham's practice has been in the past, but going forward, I would like to implement that. And so we are asking under the Town Administration, Town Administrator Act, if you would appoint Tom Mayo as the person that could work with me. And I have a, lists of town Republican committee members, Democratic town committee members, and then a list of election workers that have worked for years with Eileen, that we are putting together for both the September and the November elections. And so I would like to have an official appointment letter for each calendar year. We would go forward, we would start this now and, and every year I would, we would come forward and, and ask you to appoint or give the town administrator the ability to appoint those people.
Great, thank you. Let me see if any, so let's, let's look at the, the election officers first. So any questions about?
We have about 60 people.
Oh, great.
Sixty to 70 actually. And not all of them would be used for each election, but these are the people who are available and depending on what their, their schedule is, what our needs are, we would have those people though appointed for the year and then utilize them as we needed them.
Great, thank you. Liz, any questions?
Just a question about that process. You have the people, the people would all be appointed and then how many people do you use at each election? How many workers do you have?
Well, we probably would use between 30 and 40 because we do, we offer two shifts. It's a long day, especially for the state election. My, my state legislators out there, you know, we have early voting, we don't need to be there from seven in the morning till eight at night. So we have two shifts we offer and then we also offer an all-day shift, you know, for, for people who serve as the wardens, they're, they're the entire day. So, you know, they'll be there from 6:30 in the morning until nine o'clock at night. So we, we offer it that way so that gives people the ability, if they can't stay all day, they can choose what works for them and people have lives and other things to do as well.
Okay, great. And so this is something that we would do on an annual basis?
Yes, going forward.
Okay. Okay, no other questions, thank you.
Joe? Yeah, what exactly do the election officers do?
Well, so I don't know if you voted in the May election, but they all, they had poll pads, so you check people in. They used to have books where they would check names off and, of the verified voters. So they check people in, they give ballots to each registered voter. And then when the voter makes their selections, they, they put it into the tabulator at the end, but they have to have a person that oversees that process if there's any questions or sometimes the ballot doesn't go in quickly or a person changed their mind and they said, oh, I made a mistake, I need a new ballot. So there is different roles along the way. And then at the end of the night, the votes have to be tallied.
And is there any sort of training that the officers go through?
So we do, we provide training ahead of time. So last spring, we did it for the poll pads because that was brand new for the town. They had used them for early voting according to Eileen McCracken, but they had not used them as, as a check-in. And it was a great process and it was more work for our office initially because you have to update the information, but afterwards you had all the information and we could create reports. So it was, and people really enjoyed it. They were, I think they were happy to see us taking a step forward.
And are these all volunteers?
They are not. They are paid. We pay minimum wage for the election workers and the wardens, give a slight bump up.
Great. That's it, no other questions, thank you.
Anybody from the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll turn to Zoom, see if anybody out there has any questions. Okay, seeing none, I would take a motion.
I will make a motion that the Select Board pursuant to Section 2C of Chapter 263 of the Acts of 2016 hereby delegates to and authorizes the town administrator to act on its behalf to appoint election officers for each election voting place in the town of Hingham in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 12.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I hope you all view our new ballot box. It's been installed in front of town hall today. That was a long time in coming, but it looks great and the maintenance staff, Jeff did a great job of getting it installed with Chris's help today, so we are, it's open for business.
Thank you.
And before I let you go, Carol, and so the next item is potential vote to delegate authority to the town administrator regarding detailing police officers at polling places under Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 72.
Yes, and this was a change initiated under the Votes Act that just came out in the end of June. Prior, the chief alone would designate the people, that would, the officers who would serve on Election Day. The legislature turned that authority over to the Select Board and I spoke with Deputy Chief O'Shea and he and I thought that perhaps the best way, most flexible way going forward is again to delegate the authority so we don't have to, some of these decisions are made last minute, you know, depending on, on what the, the schedules are. If we could, you know, if you would delegate that to the town administrator and we would work with, with Tom on that.
And the sufficient number, is that determined by the chief and the town administrator or when it says sufficient number? Does the law require a certain number of police officers or does it?
No, I mean, we, we do need to have one inside each polling location and then we also have one at the door, but, you know, it might depend on, on the election. You might have more than that because of, you know, it, like the 2020 presidential election, I'm sure required more people than you would have for our local town election, so.
Joe, any questions?
So just following up, so I think what Bill was asking is the statute itself doesn't mandate a particular number?
No, there isn't, there is a minimum of two, of two per each polling location, but you can exceed that and, I mean, we, I worked with the chief and with Deputy Chief O'Shea and we had no issues.
Great, no other questions, thank you.
Liz?
So I know on Election Day, we often have police detail directing traffic as well. Is that part of this or is that?
No, that would be separate.
Okay. Okay, no other questions.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion that the Select Board pursuant to Section 2C of Chapter 263 of the Acts of 2016 hereby delegates to and authorizes the town administrator to act on its behalf to detail a sufficient number of police officers or constables for each polling place in the town of Hingham in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 72.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all, all those in favor by roll call vote, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries. Carol, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good to see you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion and potential vote regarding a letter to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation regarding the design contract for the Route 3A roadway improvement project. And I think JR is going to take the lead on this one. JR, good evening to you.
Good evening, Phil. So where we're at is we have continued forward with the design of the Route 3A improvement project and as part of that effort, we were able to hold a very successful public meeting in January that demonstrated significant region-wide support for the project and the safety improvements that are contained within. However, it, the entire stretch of roadway that we've been working on is all state highway layout and under normal circumstances, the state being the owner of the road would bear the responsibility of executing this type of design as well as the construction. Now, they, we are on the tip going forward, so they are, the state is being responsible on the funding of the construction. What this letter will do is request that they take up the funding of the remainder of the design. And this is something that occurs within the normal course of business with MASTOC. When a project within state highway layout has advanced past the 25% point and it's demonstrated to be a viable project with significant public support, then their common practice is to, is to take ownership of the entire design. And that's what this letter requests. I will add that the Route 3A Task Force has discussed this quite a bit and voted on last Thursday's meeting, we had an abbreviated meeting, but voted to recommend that the Select Board issue this letter to MASTOC.
JR, thank you. Would any members of the 3A Task Force like to add anything to the presentation? Okay, seeing none, let's see if anybody has any questions from the board. Joe?
Sure. Well, this is, I think, very important and I'm glad we're, it's been brought to our attention and I'm hopeful that we do move forward with the letter. So just first for the, for the mundane, I assume that what we have, what we have before us is a draft of the letter, which is dated August 4th and that we will, when it's issued, it will be dated with the current date? Is that, is that the intention here?
That's correct. It was, it was a draft.
Okay.
And we would re-date it as well as make any changes that the Select Board would require prior to filing.
Sure. So I am not as well-versed as you in dealing with the state on this. Do we need to make it crystal clear that we're asking for financial support? The letter talks about participating in the design contract. So is participating, participation a buzzword for we want your money or do we have to be more explicit?
No, that is as explicit as it needs to be. Our designer has a contract, a current contract, a master services agreement with the state. And what, what this request initiates, provided that the state agrees, provided that MASTOC agrees to it, is what it, what they would do is they would then provide an estimate and scope of services back to MASTOC and MASTOC would accept that estimate and scope of services and they'd be able to execute that addendum to their existing master services agreement. And so the work on the project would be seamless. They would not need to go out to bid for another design consultant and then re-engineer any element of, of the project.
Okay. Do, what is the dollar amount we look, that the state would be on the hook for if they go forward with this?
That number is indeterminate and it is somewhat dependent on the choices that MASTOC makes within their design.
Okay, that makes sense. And would it be to our advantage to include as CC recipients our state senator and representative or is that not a good thing to do here?
I would say that it is, I would say that that might be advisable.
Okay. So we can add them to the CC on this, as the CC recipients?
Yes.
Okay, great. No other questions, thank you.
Great, thanks, Joe. Liz?
Just, just one question, JR, could you just explain what Hingham's role would be or what the role of the Route 3A Task Force would be going forward, assuming that the state does accept this request?
Sure. There are two, I think, vitally important elements that we will continue to be involved with. And the first is maintaining the role of the Route 3A Task Force to monitor the design progress, to confirm that the design remains on track for our construction in 2025 and to make sure and to... in 2025, and to make sure, and to continue building the, and maintaining the existing public support for the project. That kind of effort is very important to MassDOT, and they will very much appreciate that we are continuing that effort, because public perception is something they're very sensitive to. The second element, and it's one that I will be more directly involved with, is maintaining contact with the designers and being an advocate for our abutters on the project, and making sure that your constituent needs are being served in terms of all of the elements of design. Now, there were, in any kind of project like this, there are going to be abutters that are unhappy with a particular outcome. But as an advocate, I would continue to push to provide the best outcome possible.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the public have any questions or comments?
Bill, I have just one other, one other question. What is the expected timing on this, in terms of getting a response back from the state?
I would imagine that the timing might be, might occur within a month or two.
Oh, that quickly. Great. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I move to authorize the Chair to execute and send a letter to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation regarding the design contract for the Route 3A roadway improvement project in the form attached hereto.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, JR, but stick around. We got you for the next one.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the petition from Morris Engineering Company Incorporated to install approximately 275 feet of eight-inch water main in one fire hydrant in Pope's Lane. I know we have JR on line here. We also have Russ Tierney from the Water Company, and also Jeff Hassett from Morris Engineering. But JR, why don't you kind of start us off, and then I'll have Russ speak and Jeff as well. So go ahead.
Sure. The, the project that is being proposed will provide water service to a single residential home that is accessed off of Pope's Lane. The, in order to provide that water service, we are installing, or rather, the owner of the property is installing 275 feet of water main, plus or minus, and a fire hydrant within Pope's Lane to expand our fire protection capacity, as well as maintain water quality within that, that line. And once the water main is completed and inspected by Weir River Water Service, Russell Tierney will forward that information to the Water Board so that they can accept ownership of the water main.
JR, thank you. Russ, you'd like to add anything to that, those comments?
Yeah.
You can just come up to the podium so we can see you. Thanks, Russ. And Russ, we all know who you are, but just state your name and position for the town, if you don't mind.
Russell Tierney, Managing Director of the Weir River Water System. JR is correct. What had happened was the fire department required a fire hydrant to be up near the house. The house will not have water from us. The house has its own well, but the fire department required a fire hydrant within 400 feet of the house. With that, the fire chief, I mean, the fire deputies and I spoke, and there would be 700 feet from the existing hydrant at Crest Farm Road in Pope's Lane to the hydrant at the house. So we decided that we should put a hydrant on the corner of Pope's Lane and the driveway that heads up to the house. Then they will add water main from there to the hydrant near the house. And then after that, we're also making provisions to extend, if we want to, at some future time up Pope's Lane. So we'll have all that in place with this.
Russ, thank you. I'm gonna have you stay up there in case you have any questions from the public. I see some of our abutters in the audience. So let me turn to Jeff. Jeff, do you want to add anything to the presentation?
Yeah, sure. Jeff Hassett here, civil engineer with Morris Engineering. Also in the audience is Paul Gallagher, the builder, and on the call is Mr. Crespo, the property owner. So the Crespos bought this property back in 2021, and they're raising and reconstructing the home on the property. We permitted that through the Planning Board and through Site Plan Review, and one of the conditions of approval, as Russell noted, was that the water main had to be extended to within 800 feet of the house. So what that involves is currently there is a water main on Pike Pope's Lane, but it only goes about 125 feet from the intersection of Crest Farm Road. So that will be extended another 275 feet to the subject property, where there will be a hydrant installed, and also a tee for if that water main was ever extended in the future. The trench will be saw cut and compacted in six-inch lifts and tested for compaction. The trench will then be paved with, with a minimum of four inches of asphalt. And then following construction, the width of the road from curb to curb will be built to two inches and then repaved. We don't anticipate having to close the road at any period of time. It would only be one lane at a time, and there will be a police detail present. And we have had a pre-construction meeting. So we were asking for a grant of location, and we do feel that in addition to benefiting the Crespos, this will also improve safety in the neighborhood and bettering the hydrant closer to other houses.
Jeff, thank you. Let's see if anybody, and just to clarify, you're coming to us at this meeting as a Select Board, not as Water Commissioner, because of the street, jurisdiction over the street, opposed to the water line, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. All right, and see, my colleagues have any questions? Joe?
Have there been any comments from the abutters?
I've had a few calls about the blasting and stuff like that, and I directed them over to these guys for comment, but that's about it. Only a couple. That was about it.
I mean, have, has our office received any?
No.
Okay, so we haven't. Great. I mean, because this, this looks to me like it makes sense, and I would support this. Great, thank you.
Liz?
Right, no, I was just, I had the same question. It seems like it would benefit the whole neighborhood, so just curious if any abutters had any concerns.
Nope.
Okay.
All right. I see some of the abutters in the audience. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Wise, come on up to the mic.
One right here, one behind you.
This one right here, that way everybody can see.
I want you on the screen over there.
Good to see you this evening, Bill. Just name an address for the record, if you don't mind.
Sure.
William Wise, Hingham resident, 10 Pope's Lane. Well, I gotta tell you, I'm overjoyed by the, by the fact that you're bringing the hydrant up right across from my driveway. That's, that's a very good, very good thing for you to do. Also, that you're anticipating that maybe in the future, we'll be able to extend Hingham water down to the end of Pope, Pope's Lane, because there's about seven homes down there that still have wells, well-producing wells, and, but access to town water is very important. I know it was for us when we built our house, because our well failed, and the builder brought in town water and was able to connect me and my two neighbors, which was behind us, which was really good. So I only have a few questions, but I think, Mr. Hassett, you covered them nicely. Police detail, access to and from for the residents on the highway, on the, on the road, great. I just have one issue, though, is about the blasting. I was told that the trench is about five feet deep. If I'm wrong, tell me, but that's what I was told. And there's quite a bit of ledge up there, so there's going to be blasting. And I know the law provides that, the strict liability for blasting for actual damage caused from materials leaving the blast site and touching onto the property. But there's also issues with respect to vibrations and through the ground that impacts a home. And those are damages approved by negligence and not strict liability. So my question is this: Who's supervising the blasting from the town, number one? And number two, who is the contact person that we may call in the event there's an issue that comes up that we would like to have looked at? And those are the only two issues that I have right now. And, but I want to thank you for the opportunity to, to speak to you about this.
Thank you, Bill. JR, would you be the best person to answer, answer those questions, or should we put them over to Jeff?
So strictly, the town would not necessarily be in charge of any blasting. And part of the reason for that is that if we were to direct some action, then we would be responsible for the work. So we would, we would participate, if there was blasting, if they were unable to hammer out the, the ledge in order to provide the trench, and they required to do, were required to be blasting, they would follow the law, and they would have their own inspectors on site to document exactly how and when each of that, each step was performed. And I believe prior to any blasting, they would also go into any residents that might be impacted and do a cert, a condition survey to identify the existing condition so that if there is any deviation, they'd be able to address it.
Jeff, want to add anything?
More to echo, the blasting is permitted for the fire department, and it would be done so by the person doing the blasting. That's someone who would be insured. And as part of getting that permit, there is a requirement for, you know, a pre-blast survey of houses that could be impacted.
All right, so I guess what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is you, you're, I guess you're both saying is the town doesn't have any plans to do any blasting. Is that correct?
The fire department permits it, and, and that's because of, you know, the use of explosives.
Yeah.
And, but in terms of the actual application, it's the contractor that is executing the work that is responsible for all of it. And then Jeff, or his designated, would also be there to monitor it and observe the conditions of the work.
So any blasting that's going to be done is going to be done by the private homeowner?
Correct.
If blasting is needed, okay. So even though the Weir River is running the line, it's still the private homeowner that does any blasting associated with the line or any sort of?
So Weir River is not running the line. A private entity is installing the line, and Weir River is accepting the completed work product.
I saw, I saw your hand up. Maybe you could, yeah, if you could give some background to Mr. Wise's question. If you could just say your name and address on the record, that would be great.
My name is Paul Gallagher, licensed builder, 41 years. I live in 304 Mount Blue in Norwell. So thanks for seeing us, and with our neighbor over here, I'm happy to give my name. I'm on the job site every single day. The cell shore blasting is the, would be doing blasting if there is blasting. So one of the first steps we would do after hopeful approval here, and in two weeks after neighbors get the abutters notification, then we would go out and do a pre-survey, do a test along the whole road going up there with hopes that we don't have to blast. But certainly, there's a lot of ledge up there. So that is the, so if that is the channel, prior to doing any of that work, there'll be a pre-blast survey to anyone's homes that may be affected through cell shore blasting. So that's, and they go in and take pictures and do all that, too. But I'll give my name certainly as well with my cellphone, too. But as I say, I'm on the job every single day.
Great.
So hopefully that answers that. But that's the, the cell shore does have a good track record, and they've done a ton of work in that area, too. That's why we selected them as the blaster, if needed.
Great. Mr. Gallagher, thank you. I think that answered your questions, Bill, but do you have any else?
I do have a follow-up.
Go ahead, yeah, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Thank you very much for that. I'll have your card as soon as we're out of here. I didn't ask for the town to supervise the, the process. I asked for the town to observe the blasting, when and if it occurs. Someone from the town, my town, who's there on a public road in front of my home, who's not associated with a contractor, all right, who would know when the blasting would occur and be there to observe it. That's all I'm asking for.
Then, yes, I'm happy to monitor and observe the blasting, any blasting, if it takes place.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you, Bill. Thank you, JR, as well. Anybody else have any questions or concerns?
I have one.
Of course, Russ, yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, JR. And, and on top of that, I'm gonna also be there if Jack, one of us will definitely be there. But we have also instructed the contractor that's putting the water main in that we don't want to blast unless it's totally necessary. So he's gonna try to hammer as much as possible.
Great, thank you, Russ.
That's kind of what we talked about.
Appreciate that.
Can I just ask Russ a question? Russ, do you actually inspect the water main before it's, before it's connected or after it's connected to say, okay, this is up to our standard?
All the way up until it hits the private property line, we will do the inspection and make sure it's all done properly.
Great, thank you.
Great.
Apologies for not interrupting you, Chris, my daughter, you're on the property.
Oh, excellent.
I think Jeff can see us.
Welcome.
All right, any other questions or concerns from the public? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of Morris Engineering Company Incorporated to install approximately 275 feet of eight-inch water main in one fire hydrant in Pope's Lane, and to authorize a permit for the digging up of said public way for said purpose under Town of Hingham General Bylaws, Article 10, Sections 12 and 13R. The water main extension will originate at the existing gate valve located near the property boundary of 8 and 10 Pope's Lane, running south southeasterly in Pope's Lane, turning easterly for the installation of a fire hydrant at the property boundary of 11 and 15 Pope's Lane, and continuing in Pope's Lane to the terminus of the main. The water main extension will improve fire protection capacity in the neighborhood and provide new water service to the property at 11 Pope's Lane. This approval is subject to the stipulations of the Department of Public Works, as outlined in the letter dated August 4th, 2022, and subject to the approval of the Board of Water Commissioners to accept the new water infrastructure in said public way as part of the Weir River Water System.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor by roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, congrats.
Thank you for coming in, everybody. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, our appointments. I believe we have one appointment this evening?
Yes, I'd like to make an appointment, Bill. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jen, Ben Jarvis, to the Lincoln School Apartments Board of Managers to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor by roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries. And before we move on to the next item on the agenda, I just want to note that we do, we are working through our appointments this, this summer, but we continue to make appointments throughout the year. And we still have openings on the following committees: Affordable Housing Trust, Audit Committee, Bear Cove Park, Beautification Commission, Cable TV Advisory Committee, Community Preservation Committee, Council on Aging, Cultural Council, G.A.R. Hall Trustees, Historic District Commission, Historical Commission, Lincoln Apartments Board of Managers, MBTA Advisory Board, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, Taxation Aid Committee, the Veterans Council, and Weir River Eschuary Park Committee. So if you are interested in one of those committees, and you haven't filled out a Talent Bank form, you can go to our website and do that. Or if you came in for an interview with us earlier this spring, and we were unable to appoint you to the committee that you were interested in, but you are interested in one of these committees, please, please let us know that as well, and we, we will do our best to accommodate your interests. Like to add anything, Joe?
Nope.
Liz?
Nope.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anybody, no one is in our audience now, but does anybody on Zoom have any requests or public comment this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will turn to Town Administrator and Select Board report. So, Michelle? So Michelle, why don't we start with you this evening?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Just to reiterate so the public is aware, I said a couple of weeks ago that we would be creating and releasing helpful educational videos on, for both the public safety facility and foster school projects that are being proposed for a special town meeting on November 1st. We've done that. We've released two videos, they're on the website. Just go to the general website, hangham-ma.gov/town-meeting and you'll see some of these, some of this educational material. So feel free to get in there, listen, learn, and, and come prepared on November 1st.
Okay. Any questions for Tom, Liz?
No, no questions. Thank you for doing that.
Okay, we will turn to select board reports. Joe.
Nothing to report other than just to compliment Tom, Michelle, and Art for working hard this summer. I know a lot of people take off. You guys have been really pulling through for the town and we, we thank you.
Thank you.
Liz.
Just two quick updates. The Weir River Water System Citizen Advisory Board had a meeting today. As I'm sure most residents know, we are in a Level 2 water ban, which prohibits non-essential watering. I also met with the Chair of the Harbor Development Committee this week and they are working on their master plan, so more to come for residents and the public to see this fall.
Thank you. And I have nothing this evening. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Hope everybody has a great week. See you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.
Recording stopped.